Okay, let's...
No, I'll begin.
...of the United States of America, to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, without individuals with liberty, justice, and seral.
Okay, um, have you done the agenda? Is there a difference against the agenda? Not in the right, it's going to be presented. Most main targets will put the agenda as presented, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. I'm sure your mics are on, but mine was not on, so... A pain. Okay, uh, approve a... Approve a minutes that's a consent agenda, excuse me, because, uh, public comment. Let's back up, let me get this up organized here. Uh, public comment, does anyone wish us to make any public comment to this council? Nope, hearing none, we'll move on. Uh, consent agenda, three items, four point one, approval minutes of the February ninth regular meeting, four two, approval minutes of the January thirteenth, park board meeting for three approval claims for the month of February, and I guess four items for approval, four four, approval of the Sheriff's Department report for the month ending January fifteenth. Any of those items need to be pulled out for further review? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I have one question on the claim register. Do we always pay for the EMT courses for the firefighters?
Yes.
And so what does that do to their training budget?
I think they're reimbursed for that from the state, but...
Oh.
It accounts for, um, we try to show a code, I believe, for at least one or two firefighters a year.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any other... If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
The most main second to approve the consent agenda as is presented, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Okay, moving on to staff reports, public works.
Mr. Mayor, council members, you have the public works, um, staff report before you. Kyle is also present at the meeting, I'm sure he would be happy to answer any questions. Um, I was gonna mention to you also, Mayor, that in the past, we just usually acknowledge the receipt of the report, we don't always do a motion in the second, unless that's your purview, if you wanna have everybody do that, you can. But, um, in the past, or past meetings, we just would just acknowledge that we've received the report.
Okay. For all three of these reports then, for all...
Right.
For all the staff reports, you said?
Right.
Okay.
We usually have the person if there's any questions, we answer the questions, and then the mayor will just acknowledge that he's...
Okay.
We're in receipt of the report, if anyone else has any other questions. Unless you want to make it, have motions and seconds, you can do that, that's certainly your, um, call.
Whatever's found in me. Any questions for Kyle?
Open the truck. Very nice.
Are you waiting for snow?
No.
He's been doing the snow dance.
I heard something about measurable snow coming, I'm not sure when though, so... Okay, then, uh, okay, we'll accept that report as presented. Uh, city engineers report.
Mayor, council members, you have the city engineers report in front of you. Dave is also present at the meeting tonight, so if you had any questions for him, I was sure he would be happy to answer them.
I just had a question, it says preparing utility maps for public works. We've never had maps like this before, with all the work we've done in the city, that we'd never have utility maps?
No, is this working?
No, it doesn't.
Okay. Yes, we have some maps, uh, just from time to time, we need to print some new ones out, uh, for various sizes, we give them to public works for their use, so...
Oh, so this is, this is the printing on, printing on?
Correct, right.
Okay.
Should we answer, they're just printing them?
They're printing them, rather, preparing, because I... No, we should have had maps all prepared.
No, you're correct, yeah, I could have, uh, been more clear about that, that's just, uh, using existing maps.
Okay.
And then, I'm wondering, uh, can you elaborate on the looping of the water main for Fieldstone?
Sure. Uh, when we were, uh, taking a look at the roundabout project, we have some water main that were, um, that we have into that, uh, project, get some water service to the north side of the school, and the question came up that, uh, right now, Fieldstone is basically a long dead end, uh, you come off of Seventh Street, run up, uh, Highway twenty-five a little bit, that, and so you, uh, gonna have that whole neighborhood served up at one point. So we started having discussions about, uh, if we were to loop that water main to provide some redundancy to the system up at Fieldstone, how would we do that? And if it doesn't make sense to try to incorporate that into the Highway twenty-five project, bring it down to Sixty Second Street, or is there another way to do that? So we were just looking at some options for that. Ultimately, we've concluded that, uh, what provides redundancy up there would eventually bring something down that gravel road east of Luther High, and kinda come back through, um, Ridge Road and through that neighborhood is, is, uh, the most effective way to serve or to provide another, um, I guess, another way to get water up to that neighborhood. We're bringing it down to Sixty Second Street, basically, we kinda tie it back into the same point it starts right now, so...
Hmm, okay.
You really don't, uh, you don't, you don't get the benefit that you do by bringing it from somewhere else. So anyway, so that time was just associated with just, it wasn't significant, but we were just having some discussions about, uh, make sure we weren't missing an opportunity to get some water main up to Fieldstone, if this was the time to do that.
What are any reviews for Hidden Creek?
Hidden Creek, um, it's kinda hit and miss with those, but when, uh, lot surveys for new homes come in, uh, Luanne or Lois send them over to us, and then we check the elevations of the proposed house compared to the grading plan for the development, just to make sure that what's being proposed fits with what's been approved. And so that, that's kind of an ongoing thing, um, lately, it's been all Hidden Creek, uh, but from time to time, it will be, uh, up in Fieldstone we'll propose to, but it's really just, uh, a couple of different points, before they start building, we check it, uh, for consistency with the overall grading plan for the development, and then again, once, uh, once we, is it that foundation that door is it, uh, we do an ASBILT also, before...
We do an ASBILT survey at the end.
Before you issue a seal, just to make sure that it got built.
Correct.
The way it's supposed to, um, in the past, there's been some times where, um, things got put in that weren't consistent with the, kinda the overall plan for the development, and it's created some drainage issues along the way.
In the past, then, too, it would be, usually be the developers engineer that would sign off on the survey, we don't have developers anymore, you know, in the development, so we need someone that, that has the experience to look at those certificates of survey to tell us that they're accurate, so... That's what we've been doing.
Okay, anything else?
The correspondence related to the water tower, um, is that looking at the study that was done by KLM?
This was going back, uh, with, uh, Luanne, when we were, um, before this, um, when you were, you had the broadband contract coming before you, when we were doing the, uh, the work with Sprint last summer, the last summer, or the... Um, there were a lot of punch list work, and a lot of things noted during that, those inspections, so there's a lot of correspondence back and forth, a good share of it related to Sprint, which is the work that we were out there inspecting, but there were a lot of other things that Sprint was saying, well, this isn't our stuff, and it related back to the broadband, so, uh, we were just digging back and kind of those old punch list, old correspondence, um, uh, looking and trying to sort out what Sprint stuff and what was related to the broadband for, to get to Luanne, so as you were looking at that, uh, your new agreement with them, that you had that information.
And then also for KLM, they wanted to see what had been, what, what the items were that were punch list items, that were noted, noted by Bolton and Mink, and what had been done with those, so that was, it was also for them, too.
Okay. As we move forward, will we be using Bolton and Mink a lot regarding the broadband cellular, or will we be using KLM?
I would think that we'd be using KLM as long as KLM is gonna be on the water tower now, but I needed the punch lifts that Bolton and Mink had done, that's what I needed, and those pictures, so...
Yeah, I understand, I just wanna make sure that we're, we're gonna separate here somewhere.
Yeah, right, no, and this, this was just kind of, yeah, again, the correspondence that had been generated with the Sprint work, um, and handing that off, and, yeah, I would, I would guess now from this point, um, through this project, KLM will be a point of contact, uh, to take that forward, unless they have any, uh, need any information from us, from past work that we've done.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else, others who accept that report as presented? Sheriff's Department is nothing for that, I see. Uh, city administration.
Mayor, council members, you have my report before you, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I did attach to this, the, um, uh, what, the page of the county, Carver County Public Health, it shows the aging population in the city of Mayor, I do have for the whole Carver County and for all the, um, communities, if you're interested in seeing that, too, but that was something that was presented.
Interesting.
Mm-hmm.
Kinda shocking.
Mm-hmm.
Attention. Yeah, interesting.
Any other questions of Luanne? If you have not, then we'll accept her report as presented. Uh, item six point one, presentation of annual report on the wastewater treatment facility, Greg Clover.
Mayor, council members, Greg gives an annual report every year, and so he is here tonight to do that.
Evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you have before you tonight my annual report of operation and maintenance for the wastewater treatment facility, uh, owned by myself, I'm also public works employee, Kyle Keats. Since September two thousand fourteen, the waste water treatment facility began its ninth year of operation. Since startup, the wastewater treatment plant has continued to produce a high quality excellent, well exceed the permit limits established by the NPCA. City of Mayor and wastewater facility staff have received an operational order from NPCA for the last eight years, and have received a total of fourteen since nineteen ninety-nine. Unfortunately, the flood that occurred in June created the need to bypass the lift station and power, which prevented the NCA from receiving more for two thousand fourteen. The two thousand fifteen, we are on track of a perfect record, and hopefully, we'll receive our fifteen to word in two thousand fifteen. Listed below, there's some items of interest, such as current budget status for the year end, plant's oil rates, annual flows, bio solid removal, required maintenance, as well as report and sampling are also included. This year, I also included some cost saving projects that staff implemented. With that, general wastewater treatment facility information, two thousand fourteen budget, the wastewater treatment portion, wastewater treatment plant portion of sewer budget for two thousand fourteen was a hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and forty-six. The year end actual budget came in a hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and thirteen thirty, or five point six seven percent over budget. The line items that contributed to that overage were bio solids disposal, electric utilities, testing and lab service, and repair supplies and maintenance. Please note that two of these line items, which amounted to about, probably about seventy-five, eighty percent of that overage, were contributed to entries that were made in, that should have been made in two thousand thirteen budget, but, um, were made, they came in late, bills came in late at the end of the year, and they're actually ended into the ledger in January, so that was bio solids. Bio solids, the fall bio solids costs were, were actually, uh, five thousand, one hundred and fifty-two, and, uh, then there was an entry for testing and lab services for seven fifty-seven, that actually got into the two thousand, uh, fourteen budget. So, um, with that, um, the two thousand fourteen flows, the wastewater treatment plant were up around ten million gallons, fifteen point five seven million gallons to the plant in comparison to forty point four four in two thousand thirteen, and most of that increase was due to the heavy rains in April through to July of two thousand fourteen. Our bio solids disposal, we were up on that, too, we were, we had two hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-three gallons compared to two hundred and thirty-three thousand gallons in two thousand thirteen. Our removal rate, and this is how our plant is performing, is still removing at a ninety-nine percent rate, both our BODs and both suspended solids rates, as well as our phosphorus removal, so, uh, I mean, the plant is running excellent, doing a great job. Also, this year, we implemented the new five, started implementing the new five-year permit for wastewater treatment facility, which was applied for by staff and approved by the NPCA in February two thousand fourteen. Earlier, I mentioned some cost saving ideas, cost saving projects that we, we completed for the treatment plant, uh, one of those, to give you a little history, last winter was a rough winter, and had real cold, cold weather all the time, we have a hundred and sixty-five thousand gallon digester that had air introduced to it, that would be, we had a real hard time keeping that freezing up last year, even with, with the existing air that's being provided to the plant. Kyle and I looked at a lot of different things that we could do to improve on that, because it means having to go in there and actually chisel ice from around each diffuser daily to keep that thing open. To improve that airflow, which was then adding additional pipes and diffusers to the project, and as you can see by my memo, the cheapest alternative they could come up with was twenty-six thousand dollar improvement, which was huge. Kyle and I kept on picking around some ideas, we were thinking a different thing. Kyle came up with, with an idea to rearrange those diffusers with the addition of just a small nickel to extend out further to the, toward the edge of the wall, it was a great, great thing. When we put it in, put it in place, it was only a matter of about two, three hundred dollars worth of materials, and, uh, it's working well, we have a few modifications we gotta make to it, but, uh, other than that, it was a great job, so, I saved a lot of money. We also, um, throughout startup of the plant, we've been experiencing some problems with our UV disinfection. This is something that we've had ongoing problems with ever since the plant started, and we were able to keep it going, we were able to keep and meet our disinfection, um, periods, but it was a continuing problem. Met with many people, finally, we actually ended up getting Sidon, a technician, out to look at it, uh, and found that the problem was just about ground wired to the transformer inside the panel, which was causing the majority of our problems.
All these years, that was the problem?
From start, yeah. And so, um, obviously, it didn't sit well with me, so, um, negotiated that with the, uh, with the manufacturer, and ended up getting that whole, all the parts and the travel portion of the bill, which ended up being around forty-five hundred dollars totally eliminated, so, um, that was great, and things are running a lot better now. So, uh, the next thing was Bob's Repair. We had them out, to begin with, we do maintenance inspection on all of the generators every year, uh, Total Energy Systems has the contract to do that, they have a five-year contract which is ending, and so we'll be looking at negotiating some new, new prices on contracts to, uh, to do our maintenance on all of our generators throughout town, that's at the water treatment facility, it's at the lift station, we have one at the well number two, and wastewater treatment facility, so that's four standby generators. But anyway, as part of that inspection this year, we found that we had, uh, submissions with thermostat, and also the antifreeze needed changing, and we wanted a quite significant amount to do that, so we looked into having Bob's Repair do the work, and we ended up saving eight hundred dollars over the cost of the, uh, generator company doing that repair. So, there's certain things, I feel, you know, we feel comfortable letting them do, and some things that we would really need the, the generator companies to continue to do, so... One last thing, uh, that we've looked into, I think you have a memo from me in your packet on it, and that was looking at using that existing generator out at the wastewater treatment facility, uh, to take advantage of Excel off-peak power program. So, we re, I, I looked into that, and, uh, there's a couple of different programs that we could have taken advantage of, just based on our power consumption, which you have to be, you have to use over fifty kilowatts power, uh, daily to be eligible for these Excel programs, where we use a hundred and fifty-two kilowatts. So we were eligible for the programs, uh, there's a, a ten-year program, and there's a five-year program. The ten-year program, uh, your, uh, Excel could interrupt your power, and you'd have to use your auxiliary generator to completely run the plant for a maximum of a hundred and fifty dollars per year, and you'd be, like I said, you'd have to sign a ten-year program, there is actually a one-year trial period, um, but the cost savings to us based on our consumption would be twenty-five hundred dollars a year, on a ten-year program. On a five-year program, um, you, they can interrupt you for a maximum of eighty dollars per year. There's also a one-year trial period available with that, based on our consumption, our annual cost savings, we'd estimate it would be about sixteen hundred and seventy-eight dollars. So, and to analyze these things, of course, we gotta look at, you know, if we're gonna run our act, the generator, I took that lowest five-year program and looked at it, and, uh, if we would have had to run those max hours of eighty for the year, um, we gotta know what our generator's gonna, what kind of fuel it's gonna take, right, to begin with. So I looked at, uh, running that generator at half load, which would have probably been sufficient to run our treatment facility, and at a cost of two fifty per gallon per diesel, which is on the low side, um, that thing would use about thirty, it uses about fourteen point nine gallons per hour of fuel, so, um, the fuel cost to run that thing per hour would be about thirty-seven point two-five dollars per hour. But, take that, multiply it times eighty, and you're looking at twenty-nine hundred and eighty hours. So, um, I saw the farther I needed to go to investigate, so, um, I don't think, I don't think that's worth our time. So, I just wanted to let you know that we looked into it, and, uh, it seems feasible this time. So with that, um, the next item I have on my report is the two thousand fourteen maintenance repair of the wastewater treatment facility, and most of you have seen this before, it's the same format I've used in the previous year, council member McEaly's probably never seen this before, but what this is, I go up in this town, it's a daily, weekly, monthly, quarterly, biannual, and annual things that we do on a regular basis out at the wastewater treatment facility, so these things are pretty much always done, um, and, in addition, I've added a law, the repair law, on the back, and that's, uh, January through December, a list of things, other than the things I have listed there that we've, we've done out at the wastewater treatment plant. With that, some major things that we've found as far as repairs out there, um, were we, we changed the seal on our, on our primary clarifier, um, which was a result of the inspection we had done by the company that built that thing, we took care of that. We also found during our regular maintenance inspections on, uh, on all of our lift stations, we found two derast pumps, return activated pumps, that were, uh, taking on water. We discussed that at the budget workshop, and council authorized us to go forward and ordered one of those pumps in two thousand fourteen, which we've done, we got it on site, and you will be receiving a memo from me in the near future here on, on purchasing the other one, so that we have them available, so, in April, when they come out to do our manual inspection, that'll be another cost saving that we can realize by having put those pumps in during the regular maintenance inspection and not making a separate trip out to do that, so, um, in June, talked about it earlier, our drain event of the station number one, uh, had to make a decision to bypass, and so the basements were not backed up. We, uh, we, I've identified, you know, a number of manholes which Luanne has talked about earlier, and we're looking at ramps to raise those manholes so that they don't, uh, surcharge again, so, um, I think with that, that is about it. All I also, as an attachment, you have the two thousand fourteen permit compliance survey from the NPCA, this is a document we receive every year, uh, that, basically, it's the all the, all the things that we submit every year, as far as, uh, the, the monthly EMRs, and it just shows you what all of our, all of our, uh, sample results were, and whether or not we got anything, you know, not the reports that weren't turned in, and you can see, if you can look through this report, just, you know, identify number six under that, releases, that was the only thing that kept up the momentum, that, uh, I wanted to see this. With that, we'd be happy to take any questions on any portion of this, and...
Any questions for Greg? I think I know the answer, but, uh, the four generators, generators we have, in the event of a, uh, tornado or something like that, just one or two of those are portable that could be used to power different parts of the city of Nepey, right, or not?
We, we still have one portable generator that was left over from the, uh, the old water treatment facility, but it's not wired for, and it's too small, actually, I think, to run either, maybe the lift station, it could be wired to, to run, but all of our facilities, um, are wired, are hardwired, it's stand-by, it's available with an automatic transfers, which, uh, in the event that we lose power, those can start up automatically, nobody has to start them, and I mean, they've been a lifesaver for us over the years, they've done theirs perfectly, and, uh, when power goes out, they start, and, uh, they keep us, everything flowing, so, I mean, that's, that's their purpose, and, uh, I mean, you think about a generator, and it's a lot of cost to have it sitting there, but when that event happens, it's sort of, it's very important.
Well, I, I totally agree with that, I, I understand that, I just, so they, those are all hardwired and...
The only thing, Mayor, that you could probably use that one for is what it may be using their, uh, wiring, or putting on, uh, something in it to wire it, uh, use it to run like a Fieldstone generator, I mean, uh, lift station out there.
Okay.
I don't know if it's large enough, I'd have to research that, but, I think the thing always did run well, I thought, with the generator, so...
The other thing is that I have had, um, or asked Adam Metzl to give us a price on doing a switch here, so that we could use that generator as backup generator here, and he, um...
Wouldn't get a permit.
Hasn't done that yet, so I need to contact him to find out if it...
Okay.
It wa, it's load would work here, is what I need to do. I'll contact him again, and, and he has all the information, just to get a price from him on that.
Okay. Anything else for Greg?
Thank you very much.
Good job, Ed.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Sounds like between you and Kyler, you come up with some good ideas, so keep it up.
Mm-hmm, we're lucky.
We're always trying to save money.
Okay, um, so, six to approval of lease agreement with broadband.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council members, um, attached is the proposed lease agreement with broadband and an email from Anthony Will on his review of the lease agreement. This lease agreement, uh, does have the automatic renewal clause, which is really section two, I don't know where 4D came from, access, um, this paragraph, the city council will need to discuss about access, because in this new lease agreement, it also gives him twenty-four hours, seven day a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a, access. The previous agreement is, the information in italics is what was in the agreement that he had signed previously. Council had discussed having an escrow for additional public works time, and also additional rent payments to the city. Mr. Will is offering to pay an additional ten dollars per month for the electricity, staffs requesting council input on the lease, and then appropriate a motion, um, either approving the lease or giving, giving me direction on what should happen with the lease. The city attorney does receive council packets from me, and I had not sent this lease agreement to him, so when he got his packet today and reviewed this, he had some concerns about that there's, there should be a terminate for no reason in here, um, and there isn't, and that he ought to renew it, he ought to review this, um, also before city council approves it, so he didn't think it would be prudent tonight to approve the lease agreement. So with that, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, um, as long as Greg and Kyler are here, I'd like your comment on the twenty-four seven access to the water tower.
My comment is great, though.
Oh.
You go first, Kyle.
Maybe you're welcome to go.
I have my opinion, so...
You've already had Kyle.
They already have Kyle's, but, uh, repeat it for me, please.
All right, well, my...
Well, my number one concern with the water tower is it is a water storage thing and that's what's being serviced and that's how I view it. So, I don't know, that's how I view it. So, in the past, well, you've seen the antennas, I mean, the issues we've had with the wires running up and down and things not being done right, people going in there and kind of mucking things up in the, within the fence area and stuff. And we're not entirely sure who did it, when they did it, who was there, what time, that kind of thing. So, just add a, a sign-out sheet, something, you know, a twenty-four hour notice or if it's quick, so be it. You know, I can come in and unlock it and do that. But I did, I like to know who's there, when they're there, and what's, kind of what they're doing. I don't know. To me, it's the water tower first and then kind of second.
Okay.
I guess I would, I would echo the thoughts on you. My, my whole thing ever since, you know, nine eleven or even before that has been, you know, the water tower needs to have security. And you need to have a, to me, you need to have a strict sign-in sheet for anybody that's entering the inside of that water tower. And you need to be, you know, not something, not a twenty-four hour, I mean, I think they need to sign up as they come in, notify, notify the city that they're going to be there. And all the other things that Kyle said are perfectly true. And you may, online security, that was one of the first things they sent out to us, you know, appearing in the water treatment facilities and things like that, making sure you know who's there, who's an eye on, so.
Okay, so I'm, I, security, I heard one thing as far as notifying, say, before any entry, then it...
Right. There should be, I think, there should be some sort of a sign-in, sign-out, I think.
Like, but I, actually verbal notification or two that...
Oh, notification, yeah.
Okay.
So that you know who's there, what type of vehicle is there, their license plate number, and what period of time they're going to be there.
Yeah, I think that maybe if this is going to the city attorney, that needs to be written in the contract somehow that we don't just have a blanket twenty-four-seven access phrase in there. But there's some definite stipulations as to what that includes. And that the verbal notification, the login, logbook, or the case may be.
I think we're a little bit di, we may be a little bit different in some cities because not, most of them have outside, you know, outside facilities and stuff that they check. And they don't have to enter, they actually enter the water tower all the time. Whereas here, I think they're requesting you be in there and climb the tower. I think we need, we need to make sure too that they're, they're following some safety guidelines that everybody is in. They're climbing that tower, doing any work on there. They shouldn't be doing it unless they have the proper equipment and proper personnel there along the way, so.
Is the top hatch on the tower locked? Get into the bowl?
There's a chain on it, isn't there?
Get in the, I don't know. That height's getting onto the roof is open and then the cabs are getting into like where the water is itself is folded shut.
Folded, yeah.
Yeah.
Folded shut. You know, we'd have to take, it'd be tough to get, you'd have to rent it out open, yeah, but.
Another second question.
I know you guys are addressing that, that hatch because that's the...
Well, the hatch is one issue, getting out onto the tower.
Right, yep.
But, you know, the, the access to the bowl with anybody working up there, most of them are locked.
I don't know if that's...
And actually, I've seen...
I don't think it does have a lock on it.
I've seen where the tower hatch coming down the stem is locked from the inside. Do we have a security on that at all? Comes back to the tower, or the water plant? So, that's not an issue? Okay.
If, if I may, the, the security is that for me, the tower, you know, in order to access the top unless they're coming in on a helicopter, you know, they got to get through the front door. My experience, I haven't generally seen the top hatch locked just because of that. I've never, I guess, I've never inspected an actual bowl hatch. You know, we haven't dealt with anything like that, so never really looked at it. But I've never noticed one, like an antlock or something like that. I can see where...
Antlocks tend to...
Well, they're often the elements, they tend to be the elements. So, I can see where that could be a problem there. But if somebody's going to be attempting, taking a helicopter, getting in your alarm, that'll...
That's probably true. Um, you said a sign-in sheet, twenty-four hour notice, sign-in sheet. So, you don't think you need to be called in to unlock it, lock it, call back?
Oh, yeah.
Other people are not too good.
Yeah, well...
Guess that's...
I like, I like to see, yeah, I guess I'd like to...
Now, we're giving out one key to broadband and one key to Sprint and who's going to be next? And are we getting our keys back, you know?
No, I...
I guess that, that's why I'm asking, would you rather unlock it and lock it for them, or...
Yeah. If I may, to address that concern, we could do something like we did with New Germany where we put a pad, a touch pad, box it. That way, it's relatively simple to change the code. Now, we don't got to worry about getting to use your, changing the lockout if you just pull the stuff, change the code. We should absolutely do that, I think, so we get things done. And as far as the sign-in sheet, that actually doesn't really matter, I think.
Okay, um, so you've heard, you've heard the comments about from our city attorney, do you wish to refer back to him?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we need to, okay.
If, if I may, just to put that on there. The original lease that we, going under under that, the, we provided the original package. There's a few amendments here that, you know, weren't clear for me, you know, I have, so it's too long to read. But then we paid to have, to get our lawyers go through and manipulate and change the lease, you know, well above budget. And then this we, we provided to us. And we're asking for really minor changes to it. So, as far as paying the lawyers and making a lease that you provided to us, we want to see that right. This is, I'm glad that's pretty difficult.
We've talked about this before, leases for the city. But he's the one that wants to be on the water tower, so he's the one that's benefiting by being a business there. And that's how we do it with everyone else.
And this is how we're protecting ourselves and this is why we pay our lawyer.
But we wouldn't have to...
To be run from him.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't, we're not making any money on this because by the time we pay the attorney for the rent that they're paying, we're probably going behind.
Then we'll deal with the rent issue.
Well, but I'm just saying is that's how we've always done it. And, and Sprint pays the attorney fees and the engineer fees and doesn't question them.
I think it's in our best interest to provide the city taxpayers with a lease that covers us. And I think there's a couple of things that the attorney has already identified that need to be added. There's a number of things in this agreement that wasn't in the old agreement to protect us from the damage that we're seeing in the tower. If he's not interested in partnering with us, then maybe we don't need to review the, the agreement.
I, I could see, ask our city attorney for upfront price first of what's going to cost to review it. If he says a thousand dollars, then tell him we're not interested. But if he says, says two hundred dollars, I think we could split the difference with him, nothing else. But I think we need to have, some of these things need to be ironed out. This twenty-four-seven access is, is one of the things. And I think the yearly increase, you know, and also the time, the, the automatic renewal of the lease. I think we, there comes a point at which we simply say, okay, it's a five-year lease. At the end of five years, we'll talk about renewing, we're not going to automatically renew it. Because at some point, we need to, see, are we getting enough money for this rent? At fifty dollars a month, or fifty dollars, excuse me, a year, a month, was it?
A month.
A month. Uh, that's a bargain price for, for rent on a water tower.
Would an option still be to provide internet service to the city, the community center, the fire department, wherever you can get it?
Yes.
All the city, all the government buildings? I mean, would that be...
Yeah, we do things like that.
In lieu of a higher rent?
Yeah, and again, it's, the, the rent number, in five years, it's automatically renewed. But it doesn't need to, it's just a, a point. It's a five-year lease. I mean, don't, don't misinterpret what that actually, that lease actually says. It says it's a five-year lease. And all it takes is, hey, we want to renegotiate. Right? So, um, that's all within the language of the lease, all right?
So, then we just take the order, renew, pop, language out of there?
Take it out, right, that's fine. You don't need to have a lawyer write that part of the lease, I mean, you know, I don't have a problem with that. The fifty dollars a month, it's little, but let's, let's keep this in perspective. I mean, I pay a hundred and fifty dollars a month to be on an actual cellular tower at three hundred feet. That's designed specifically for what we do. So, water towers are obviously not an excellent structure for us here. It happens to be a little bit bad. Again, you know, we're going to incur some very significant costs when, when the water tower gets torn down. And that's just part of the process. But that's just one of the reasons why the rent needs to be really bad because also considering weather. One of the things I would, I would urge the council, we've got to get this done. Right now, we haven't, we haven't marketed the mayor now, it's just, we're now, it's out of the next run, the next part of the month. I'm hoping to work on the water tower, since we've just done it, right?
It'll be fall.
Right, so we probably won't be able to market the tower until after that's done because we want to limit the impact that it's causing. So, I mean, I guess as far as the lease thing, those kind of things, we have, I guess, until then. But, you know, that's something to consider. We got to, we're going to have to deal with that. We got to get that, that mess cleaned up and, you know, deal with all these things again. Mr. Mayor, council members, you know, that mess isn't something you can, keep that in mind. You know, this is us coming in and cleaning up after a long time. So, and we perform that function at every other location we happen to. But you can talk to any of the other cities that are involved in that, on that, you're not going to find one that's going to have any issues. Just to straight up honest with you guys, we've spent probably twice as much money here and there. And it's, I've spent, I've been at more council meetings than mayors than all the other ones, you know. So, I, I'm sure you guys are getting tired of it. I, I am, so it's just different. I mean, whatever it can take, I mean, we provided a new lease, right? I didn't go in there and try and butcher it, it's just me that's happened.
There is a five percent increase in that lease, a year. But yeah, when you start at sixty, right, not fifty, sixty a month.
Fifty for rent and ten dollars to the electric bill.
And all the, all the, if we, if we get some free high speed in, that's all.
I don't know that we can get out of our agreements with Frontier because we've entered into agreements with them because we were able to get discounted rates by going with them and bundling with them for up to two years. So, I'm not sure that we can get out of those with Frontier and when those expire.
If, if I may, are there any facilities that don't have internet that you, you haven't necessarily considered in the past because of cost? You know, like we've signed up fire halls and things like that that didn't have internet before because it, it just didn't, there wasn't necessarily a reason to have it there. But this is something we could provide if you have the facilities that didn't have connectivity.
We haven't, no. They're at the wa, we have internet at the water plant, the wastewater plant, the fire station in here, so.
How long have we had them for? When did you bundle?
I, um, last year, I think it was. And we did it because we could, we could save sixty dollars a month on the phone bill, is why. So, we saved seven hundred and twenty dollars a year on each one of those. I couldn't do it here because we already had internet service. But because we didn't have it at the water plant and we didn't have it at the wastewater plant, we could do it there, but we couldn't do it at the fire station because we already have service there. So, that, it's just those two, the water and the wastewater, so.
Well, I hope you'll give us some consideration, assuming we are on water tower the next time we get there. Because I can guarantee you I can do, but over what you're doing now, even if we don't do the, um, as part of the service is part of the rent.
Okay, so, we talked a lot about what do we want to do?
I can have the city attorney review this and bring it back to the next council meeting. It doesn't necessarily mean that Anthony has to be here. I mean, we can provide him a copy of it before and it'll be whatever it is.
Well, I think, I think if we address that security thing as far as just tidying up some depth of stipulations, I think Anthony's in a view as far as the procedure is concerned, just that we want to have it in a lease that what's going, going to happen, take out the order of renew thing.
Yep.
So, he should be able to review that in a fairly quick manner.
True.
And, um...
And don't they already have the, that twenty-four in our current lease? So, just taking that?
And putting it in here? It's not twenty-four hour access. It's, he has to provide, in the current lease, it said, he had to provide notice to us, I believe it was.
Well, isn't that what we want?
Yeah.
Yeah, so just taking that.
So, that shouldn't be very much time. It's literally, this helps us better.
Okay, so let's do that, let's do that and let's come back next month with a, with one that we can approve.
Sure.
Get, get those things taken care of. We talked about tonight and take the order of renewal out. Got a five percent annual increase in it and then we'll go with that.
And then the, about reimbursing the site owner for expenses related to access to the site during non-normal operating hours? We're going to leave that in here? That's what was in the previous one?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, Mr. Mayor, I did, I overheard a conversation prior to the meeting. I'm also unable to paying a lump sum instead of having to burden the land with a monthly lease.
Well, I would much prefer a lump sum.
Yeah. So, if you want to put that in there, a language such as that under the rent?
Let's do that, yes, add that.
I'm, I'm happy to accommodate you guys that way. Honestly, it's, it's less work for me too.
Well, yeah, it's, yeah, I would agree with that, so, okay. Let's do that too.
Can you look into the Frontier thing and, and see what they would say?
Well, I already know that at the wastewater plant, it's, it's August. I already know that. And we already get free out there from new telecom too.
What if it picks up when they're done? Or we just...
I don't know. I mean, I don't know.
Well, just send a email when it's, when you're looking at renewing and give us an opportunity.
Yeah, that, that's discussion we have, but that's not going to...
Well, are you going to offer it free as part of the rent?
Well, if, if you, if you want to add that language, that internet services will be provided upon request to permanent facilities. Make sure they're permanent, it's in there, um, events, events can become really costly with your way. But, uh, permanent government facilities or local facilities, whatever would be appropriate language there. Yeah, you can add that to the lease. I just want to get this covered.
I just don't know if Broad, if Frontier's going to look at us and say, well, if you're going to, if you're going to take away our DSL, then we're not, we're going to jack up your phone prices.
Oh, I can guarantee you that.
Right, and that's, and so then it doesn't become a cost savings to us.
Well, I, the issue is, is we provide older.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's, let's let that discussion for the time comes when, when our phone service is up for renewal.
It should be in a lease at the time.
Yeah, it could be in a lease, but put it in a lease as far as the free internet service. But let's, um, we'll talk about that when time comes.
Clarification on two things. We got fifty dollars a month for rent and ten dollars for... Clarification on two things. We got fifty dollars a month for rent, and ten dollars for electricity. Can we lump that into just sixty dollars for rent?
You don't have a problem with that, but then the language you need to change for the utility to be included.
Um, the reason I ask is because the automatic increase, three percent, does it increase on electric or not?
Yeah, it's, it's actually, by the verbiage of the lease, it wouldn't, but I don't have a problem paying, uh, five percent on the dollar.
We could do that. We could lump utilities into the include.
But just, and to make sure you got the appropriate language under the schedule and section for the eligibility.
And for access to the tower, what are we gonna require him to, are we gonna require him to leave a deposit here, escrow, or bill?
I think bill is fine, as long as, as long as the bill gets paid properly, which you said it would.
And you said you paid him last night.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay, just so it's clear going into the contract language.
Uh, I guess contract language would say that it needs to be paid promptly, so, promptly meaning thirty days, so. Well, thirty days is typical, so, we can live with that. Okay, anything else, there's, we'll move on here, and, uh, when I'll come back something for next meeting. Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, six three, approval resolution, uh, two twenty three fifteen nine, adoption of Carver County All Hazard Mitigation Plan Amendment.
Mr. Mayor, council members, the City of Mayor is a part of the Carver County Hazardous Mitigation Plan, which fulfills the requirements of the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand. And what the plan accomplishes is the ability for the city to be eligible for FEMA funding when a disaster occurs, and this goes back to the June nineteenth flooding event that we had. The city's in the process of applying for FEMA funds to raise the manholes that were flooded in the June nineteenth, twenty fourteen event. Because the county's plan was not specific enough about the flooding of manholes as it pertains to the wastewater plant, an amendment of the county plan had to be completed to include these areas. This is addressed in the resolution that is attached. Once we approve this resolution, I'm requesting approval of the, the resolution, adoption of the Carver County All Hazardous Mitigation Plan Amendment, and after the resolution is approved, the county, and the county confirms that FEMA has approved the amendment, staff will submit the grant for raising of the manholes. And I've already met with the FEMA staff, and they are going to be funding it, so, are pretty sure that they will fund it. And that was twenty thousand dollars that we had in the, um, wastewater, um, budget, that we were gonna do on raising those manholes down here on the cartway. So I would request a, a, uh, most approving that resolution.
Makes sense to me. We're gonna get it, so, is your motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the Carver County.
Your second? Okay, motion made in second to approve this resolution for the mitigation, as, hazards mitigation plan. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, um, approval of, uh, twenty fifteen Water Resource Education Plan.
Mr. Mayor, council members, this is the second year of the implementation of the education component in the city's water management plan. Carver County Water Management Organization or the CCWMO will assist the city and provide educational opportunities for the public and city staff. The change to the plan this year is the mayor wetland restoration project and the public education or information component about that wetland, once it's completed. The other issues remain the same. There's stormwater, water conservation, Nemo, about grass clippings into the yard, mulching leaves, and other newspaper articles that appear in the Carver County newspapers. And then we also advertise on the electronic sign. Attached is the proposed program from the CCWMO. Staff is requesting council input on the education plan and approval of the twenty fifteen education plan. I've also provided a little, a flyer, rather flyer that they have, that they send out to people through, about stormwater ponds, so.
Is there any financial effects to say in this as far as?
No, none.
So who's doing the newsletter?
Madeline S- Madeline does.
So was she, do you have special newsletters?
No, she does newsletters, or she'll do newspaper articles, is what she does, or she sends me information. If I do a newsletter, I, sometimes I do one around the, um, citywide cleanup, and then I would include some things in there, maybe from her on that. Otherwise, she sends me information about workshops, and then I put them on the electronic sign, so.
Okay, um, any question on, or is there a motion to approve this resolution? Approval of the plan?
Making motion to approve the Water Resource Education.
Your second? Okay, any further discussion? There's no impact, no financial impact to the city, I guess, it's. Not a whole, uh, discussion there, any else? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, uh, going on, approval of amended fee for water heaters and water softeners.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I see I didn't, I had the statute in here and I took it out, so. In two thousand and seven, the state legislature enacted, it wasn't the following statute, but there was a statute that limited the amount of fees that could be collected on water softeners and water heaters by the cities. Um, so the twenty fourteen legislature repealed that permit fee limitation, and now the city must establish a fee for water heater and water softener replacements. The current plumbing fee for any plumbing fixture changeout is seventy-five dollars plus a five dollar state sur- surcharge. So to keep the fees the same, it would seem appropriate to make the fee for water heaters and water softeners of seventy-five, plus the five dollar state sur- surcharge. I did some research on the number of permits issued for water heater and water softener changeouts for twenty twelve, we had five, for twenty thirteen, we had five, and for twenty fourteen, there were four permits that were issued. Water softeners and water heaters would be classified as plumbing, and the current plumbing fee again is the minimum of seventy-five plus a five dollar state surcharge. So I'm recommending that that's what the fee should be for, um, water heaters and water softeners be set at the seventy-five, plus the five dollar state surcharge. So most amending the fee schedule to reflect the inclusion of water heaters and water softeners in the plumbing fee would be appropriate. Unless you don't wanna make it that much. It's, it's your call. It's, uh, we come in, they, we issue a b- a permit, and then the, um, the, uh, Metro West goes out and does an inspection, finalizes it out, and that's it. There's no difference in a re- refer, a reside. What's the cost?
What's our inspection fee cost?
Thirty, thirty-three percent is what they keep. They keep thirty-three percent, Metro West does, of the fee, and then the rest comes back to the city.
So if we set the fee at fifteen dollars, they keep five dollars, or something.
Right, right.
And they don't know, they don't know what's on why.
I don't know.
I, I.
Because it's the plumbing changer. I mean, to be consistent, I mean.
Okay, my, my question is, okay, what happens to the homeowner that goes to Home Depot, buys a water softener, and puts it himself?
We don't, we never, we don't get a fee for it.
Okay, so why are we charging seventy-five dollars for somebody that goes and has a plumber put it in? Doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, really, the homeowner should be coming and getting a, a permit from us, but sometimes they just don't.
How many homeowners know that?
Well, I don't know. But, I don't know. But again, I don't know how much is, you know, a water heater, how much? How much you spend for a water heater? I haven't bought a new water heater, so I don't know. Are they two hundred dollars?
Uh, you got a good one. It can, depends, depends on what kinda quality you buy, I mean.
And a water softener is what?
Water softener, couple hundred dollars, three, four, five hundred.
So then you wanna charge a seventy-five dollar fee to, for a two hundred dollar replacement? I mean, that, is that appropriate?
No, my, my point is, I, I, I go to Home Depot and buy one, and put it in, and no reason or a difference.
I think state statute says we have to inspect them, and if people choose not to get the fee, then they, or come and get the permit, then it's on them and not on us. And I think it's included in the building code, that's why, that's why. But I mean, if you wanna leave the fee at the fifteen, then leave it at the fifteen. He just brought it to me and told me it was repealed, and we needed to, um, I needed to bring it forward to you and ask if you wanted to change it.
You'd probably have more people come, more ho- more homeowners coming, getting a permit if you lowered the fee to thirty-five dollars.
It's your fee, you set it, so whatever you wanna set it at.
Yeah, they'd be, then, then they'd be more inclined to get it inspected, which they're supposed to do, at thirty-five dollars. I'm gonna think twice about it, too. And I know how to plumb, so I can plumb it myself, we know that.
But they were fifteen before, so, and people probably didn't even come in.
Well, then maybe it should be twenty dollars.
It's your fee, Jerry. Whatever you wanna set it at, it's up to you.
I'm just making a point, so.
And that's fine.
So why is it fifteen?
Well, we're, they, because the state legislature restricted the amount that cities could charge, and they, they made it fifteen dollars. They repealed that, that statute now, so that cities can re, well, so that cities can now establish the fee again, and it's a plumbing fee, so if you're gonna be consistent, what's on your fee schedule is seventy-five dollars for a plumbing. It's what's consistent, so, but again, it's up to you.
But plumbing is already there. I, I could, I could see the seventy-five dollars for a whole plumbing fee, because you're inspecting the whole house.
Well, seventy-five plus how much a fixture, I believe.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so, I don't know. I'm fine with fifteen, but I agree with you. I think people are more inclined to have the inspector.
That, okay, but then I, okay, but then I need a motion saying that that's what you wanna set that fee at, now.
Is there, is there a motion? Can, can, tell me, make a motion with a figure.
So who does the fifteen?
This is your second. Okay, motion made second to set the plumbing, uh, fixture fee at fifteen dollars, I guess, plus a state five, five dollar state surcharge. Any further discussion?
I, I, they'll have to, they have a contract with it, so they'll just have to do it. They won't have any choice. They still have to go out there. They're only gonna get five dollars to drive their car to a house and do an inspection, and their time, so.
They can help lead your case.
Okay.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? What's that?
They had to do.
They already have those fee at fifteen dollars, not a given Jesus, do they inspect these homes, or got these permits from fifteen dollars?
Right, but they probably didn't make any money. It probably went backwards on, on.
And they can't fund on the, on the day inspections anyhow, so.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, approval of date for citywide cleanup.
Mr. Mayor, council members, council in the past has requested that the citywide cleanup be held after the citywide garage sales. Citywide garage sales are the weekend of May sixteenth, and the cleanup would be scheduled again this year for April twenty-fifth. Staff contacted Waste Management to find out what other dates would work for the cleanup, and they offered the weekend of June thirteenth. So staff's either requesting council direction on the weekend for cleanup. Do you wanna leave it to twenty-fifth, or do you wanna change it to the thirteenth of June?
Oh, it's just, it's. Yeah, it's, you, that's in June sometime, yeah, it's. I'm not sure it's quite that early, but it's, it's kinda real close to that, yeah, I don't know.
I like the later date.
I'm fine with later date, too.
It is windstock. All the windstalkers, I'm not getting rid of their stuff.
Go through your stuff?
One lady I helped her put something in your car that she just moved. You're all helping put that in your car.
Well, unfortunately, we have our cleanup before they have the.
It's always been kind of a weird.
Rummy sale, garbage, whatever, weekend. I think we should have it after.
Have it after, so.
Like a month after. I could hold on to stuff for a month and then put it off.
Just mow around it.
What's one more month?
(laugh) Mow around.
Yes, I, good idea.
Okay, so, is there a motion to, is that the best date? Is there a motion to approve that date?
I'll make a motion to have it on June thirteenth.
Your second? Okay, motion made in second to have the, uh, cleanup on June, weekend of June thirteenth. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Extra month of cleanup.
Look what you get rid of.
Yeah.
We're gonna communicate this, 'cause people might be used to that end of April.
Yeah, we'd, I mean, I should get some definite, well, actually, I was out of time, I didn't get in last year, so that may be, that was why I didn't do it last year, but, uh, I should get the word out, make sure people realize it's coming, when it's gonna be.
Put it on the sign.
Silent.
Well, we usually, I usually do a newsletter, because we put in there then what's acceptable and what's not acceptable, too.
Okay.
So we'll probably do a newsletter bein- beginning of June.
Beginning of June?
Probably beginning of June, end of May, after Memorial Day weekend, probably.
That's only given two weeks to do.
Well, we could put it on the, I can put it on the digital sign like in May, and then do the newsletter. When do you want the newsletter?
You can put it on the sign around first of May, first part of May, or at least, so people have to know it's coming, you know, time to clean out. That way they know it's, after your garage sales are coming on the sixteenth, they got time to clean up after they get it taken care of. That would be, I think, advisable.
Okay.
Okay, uh, six seven, removal of tree, removal of tree.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, council members, I did forward, um, this information to Gary Hazy, but I see he's not here tonight, um, because he did come in with the request. The city has been approached by Gary Hazy, a member of the Zion Lutheran Church, about a tree in the alley behind the church. Mr. Hazy has stated that there are bees in the tree, and he would like to have the tree cut down. It appears that the tree is in the city's alley, when I look at it on the Carver County GIS, so it would be the city's responsibility to take the tree down. Staff has checked with the tree company, and that company will cut the tree down and remove all the wood for seven hundred and fifty dollars. Um, staff's requesting council discussion on the removal of the tree, so.
Do you have a picture? Is, where is it?
It's right in the alley.
How big is it?
It's big, it's huge. Well, cutting down a big tree.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, too. The bees are gonna go somewhere else. The bees are just gonna go somewhere else.
What do you request? Bees are.
They can move them.
Or then.
They can move them. Did you keep bees? No, he's an ex- that mark.
Well, are they hun- we don't even know, we don't even know if they're honeybees, or if they're wild, we don't know.
Maybe they're killer bees.
Yeah, that, we don't know what they are.
They go to walks that are always in church, every Sunday.
That could be.
So he's saying.
That's not a bee, that's a walk.
But, well, what he said, that, so he's saying the tree is hollow, that's what he's saying, too.
And the bees are inside the hollow part of the tree.
The problem is that, um, Gary had a person that was willing to take the tree down, but there are lines. And so when I went to look at it, um, I said we needed to contact a certified tree person, because he's gonna be insured. Seven hundred and fifty dollars would be cheap money compared to taking down Excel Energy's line. So I think that if you wanna have it done, we'll contact this person and have him take it down before it does blow over, or whatever.
If, I asked my question, if it's in city property, and it does blow over and damage house, the mayor's house, west or church's, east or, it's, who's, who's the church gonna end up paying for it?
I would think it would be the city's, too.
It are, it, it was deductible, so it'd, it'd take care of the seven hundred and fifty dollars that they spent.
Can we contact, uh, Excel Energy and ask them to remove the top part of the tree, so that we can take the rest of the tree down?
Uh, the top part of the tree doesn't hang over the bran, or, or, the branches don't hang over the wire, so they aren't gonna come and do that. They were just here last year and trimmed all the trees.
Yeah, they thought they were already done it.
But if the tree comes down, is it gonna take out their wires?
It is, but they don't take trees down. They won't do it, Bruce. I can contact them and ask them, but I know they won't do it.
But the professional will cut it so that it won't take down the wires.
No, he dropped it. He dropped it from the top, he said.
I just.
Isn't that what he said, Kyle? Right.
I'm fine with it being the half of it dead.
Well, he, that's what he's saying, it's.
I, I just know, I contacted another power company, and they're taking one down.
Okay.
Because it's gonna crush a pole in the wires, if it comes down, so.
I will contact Excel and find out. Well, if you all agree, then I will just, I have authority to spend seven hundred and fifty dollars, but I'll contact Excel Energy first. Find out if they're willing to take it down, and then if they aren't, we'll get ahold of this, um, tree trimmer and have it removed.
Yeah, tell them it's half dead, it's, uh, come down under a line, take the line down.
So we've had a tree person look at it, and, yep.
Okay, so. Okay, so.
We'd have to hire someone to do that anyway, if you do, Excel won't do that. They ain't gonna remove the shomping.
No.
Okay, so we can move on with that, then, Luann'll take care of that, okay?
And then I'll report in my next month's report.
Okay, uh, six, eight, this is some more of our policy reviews that we're doing. Uh, the first one is six point eight, is approval of information technology policy.
Which replaces the electronic mail policy that we had in the past, and the computer use policy. And then I have attached the citizen complaint policy, which remains the same as the past. I'm requesting discussion, any recommendation, recommended changes, and then a motion approving the policy.
The, on the information policy on, um, seven point three and seven point four, uh, the backup stuff, which is all CDM must be saved to a network drive or on a city server, and that stuff, I think we need to somehow make some provision for offsite backup though. Because, uh, it, I understand what's being said here, but this doesn't, uh, protect us, if tornado waves this, this building out, or everything's gone, backups are gone, too. I think we need somehow come up with some sort of offsite backup, whether it's in, whether it's in cloud or some offsite server, that, um, so we can be up and running in very short order again.
Okay. We, we use a, we use a consultant, is what, and I debated on whether I should take that out of here and just put my name in there, and I think I did in some places. And so. Should be city administrator. Now, what did I put? Maybe I need to go through and look at it again.
I guess the other, another co, comment I have is on nineteen, that, that one, um, passwords, a minimum of six, at least six alphanumeric characters, I think not accepted thing is more like fifteen, sixteen. I think I used to change, uh, six is way too short.
Okay, but that's a minimum.
Uh, it's way too short, minimum, you'd, you'd need at least a dozen for security.
Or you do.
Cap, yep.
Or in a special character.
Twelve characters.
At least ten.
Actually, I could probably give you a password, anything I've got, I have no two passwords alike, I'll probably give you, might give you a password, or anything I've got.
I can't remember them, because you might know two or alike.
Well, you, you set up, you set up a code, a, uh, that works, it can be done. I'm not giving you mine, but.
I'm interested in the code, though.
Yeah, you, you can, yeah, you can set up a form that works, and you can design any ki, any password, and no two password will be the same. So, it works, and they're, they're all gonna be twelve, fifteen characters in length, so. Okay, um, anything else on that, on, on the, uh, information technology policy? So those are the things that maybe should be addressed and maybe come back to us.
Okay.
On that. Uh, approval on the, um, let's, let's have that one come back to us. The employee and citizen complaint policy, any questions on that one? If, aren't any, is there approval of two, is there a motion to approve this policy? Your second? Yeah, motion made second to approve, uh, employee and citizen complaints policy, all, any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Yeah, that can go in the books, and the other, I think we need to rework a few things at, so.
I actually have a table of contents that I shared with Nikki that I use for my policies, it looks like this, and then I separate them by colored sheets. I can email that to you, and then you can use it as you want for yours, if you want to use it, so that you have it.
Okay, council reports, any council reports?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, thank you. Miss Allen, okay, uh, six point ten, Camden Township requests, okay.
Um, Mister Mayor, council members, Camden Township is requesting to have a representative from the city of mayor at their annual meeting at six thirty Tuesday, March tenth. They would like to have someone that can answer questions about the fire department budget. Fire chief has a united firefighter meeting, and I have a park ward meeting, so staff's requesting direction from the city council on the request. We can change the park ward meeting to the third, we don't have a planning commission meeting, but I don't know, we've talked about, we didn't want to keep changing meetings back and forth, and then I could go to this one on the town, unless there's somebody else that wants to go to this one on the town. Well, I suppose she could, I don't know, she, I can't ask her, so.
Well, I think we should have more than one person there in the first place, it sounds like they have some issues.
Did they say what kind of questions they wanted answered?
No, they just wanted to have someone there that would defend the fire department budget.
Or are they just gonna shoot the manager, shoot, shoot the messenger?
Shoot the messenger.
Yeah.
Go then.
And Eric can go? Maybe Bob, uh, Carlson, I'm sorry, Eric.
I, I think the fire chief should be there, if not, like you said, maybe the assistant chief, somebody from administration should be there, it's too important, I'm sorry, I couldn't miss that meeting, but.
Unfortunately, I got a meeting that night, I can't attend this one.
I, I, I wouldn't be able to.
I would know enough.
I, I can attend, but I would, I guess I would appreciate having somebody from the fire department that can answer some questions with, and I'll go over some details with you, Luann, but I want to have someone else with me.
I'm not sure the assistant chief would know the budget, I, I don't know that he does.
Okay.
Be able to explain.
Right.
Can he go and place a rod to the meeting that Rod's going to?
I, I guess I'll have to talk to Rod when Rod gets back and find out.
Yeah, I think it's Rod's budget, I think he needs to defend it.
Maybe he doesn't need to defend it, they just need to.
Well, present it, I'm sorry.
Right, sure, that's good.
Present it.
Yes, March tenth is the day before our next council meeting, right?
Day after.
Or day after us, you know, year after, yeah.
I mean, I, if we change the, um, if we change the park ward meeting, then I could go with whoever went to, unless you want to go, Jerry.
I, I will go, but I guess I'd like to have someone else go with me, I would like to.
I mean, I probably have more working knowledge of the budget than.
That's right.
And which, of course.
I'm, I'm not af, I'm not afraid to go, that doesn't, uh.
I think we're okay with changing the park ward meeting.
Want to just change the park ward to the third, okay? And then I'll.
So am I going, am I going with you, then?
Well, or do you want, what do you want to do, you tell me.
What's the council wish?
Yeah, that's what they are, if they, you.
Well, I think more than one person should go.
Right, but do you want, do you want someone from the fire department to go, and Jerry, or fire department, me? Or what do you want? Jerry's willing to go.
Safety in numbers.
Well, then we could, as long as you know the budget, we could just have representatives from the party department, someone a little bit in the know, that can give us some, after, Eric shake his head.
I'm sure Rod's never thought of that option before, it's.
That's fine, my, my, I, where I'm, my angst is coming from is, uh, Rod's not gonna be back till Thursday. I got a park ward packet that I have to put together in one day, then, for next Tuesday, Thursday, Friday.
Do you really have to, do you have to be at the park ward meeting, is, can I sit down with you and take the notes and?
It's up to you guys, it's up to the park ward whether you want me there or not. On the tenth of March.
I think I heard, uh, that's a little pardon meeting, so Luann can go. And if you want.
Or we could do it without her, and you can just sit down with her before and go with her.
Let me look at, I don't know what's on the park ward agenda, I can't even remember. I mean, we gotta finish that grant, that's one of the big ones.
Right.
That outdoor recreation grant. I'm not gonna have that written and done by, I can trust.
We can't make it later, we can't make the park ward later.
What can we do?
Can Camden change their meeting date?
No.
No, they won't.
You're kidding.
I know that already, they won't change.
We're too busy.
The annual meeting falls on the second Tuesday.
I, I was kidding, no kidding. So, we will have, we'll change the park ward meeting, we'll have Luann, Jerry, and try to get Rod to go. And Rod and Bob will switch that meeting, right? All right.
Uh, I, I do agree, I think, uh, Rod should be there, um, it's, uh, since they are, question about the budget, um, he presents, he prepares the budget, that should be his budget, too. He should be, he should be answering, so I do agree with that. I will be more happy to go with just to safety in numbers.
So what.
Don't put that in.
So what I'll find out on Thursday is when they get back, and if they can go, then I won't change the park ward meeting. I'll leave it till the tenth, because that gives me time to work on that, that grant yet.
And if we have to change park ward, we can do it earlier.
Right, okay.
Okay. That takes care of that. Council reports.
Um, do you, Jerry? I, um, no, um, we did meet at the park ward, met, um, the, in Old School House Park, we are looking at constructing two sand volleyball courts, um, we're gonna try to move forward with that this year. In Westridge Park, we, um, talked to someone about, um, some handicap accessible playground equipment, um, and also a picnic shelter and parking lot up there. So we have a lot going on up in Westridge Park this year, um, applying for the two grants. One is, um, we looked at last time, that's like a hundred percent grant. Uh, the other one that Luann just mentioned is gonna be like a fifty percent match, is it, um?
Up to a hundred thousand.
So I think the council will be looking at that within the next couple weeks here. Um, let me see, uh, we're looking at changing some things around with the parking lot, um, Moxie, Moxie is set for March fifth, when the sign is wrong.
I fixed it.
Okay, and then, um, that's about all I have.
Any thoughts anything? Okay, uh, just update on the, some of the, the stuff for the router stuff, Matt was sick for a couple days, he didn't get, he's, I guess, coming to meet tonight as far as the router upgrade here, which we definitely need. And, um, as far as the device thing, I've been looking at what Davis guy, I'm not, what, what are you using there?
I got an iPad.
iPad, okay, um, there's a number of things that I just need to figure out, we need to come up with some, even this thing I found, it works, I could use stylus on this thing, right, with a little on to.
You have a touchscreen?
Yes, it works real slick, so maybe we need to look at some sort of laptop type thing, uh, there's a number of those out that work with touchscreen, with stylus, that work real good. You can have your combination of stylus, keyboard, everything's working right there. And they're, uh, you can get them probably for five hundred bucks in that neighborhood.
The Windows surfaces.
With the ser, but the surfaces are expensive, that's thirteen hundred dollars by the time you get the, with the keyboard. Oh.
Well, if you put a keyboard on it.
Yeah, with a keyboard and a decent, decent processor, that's the problem.
Yep.
So, anyhow, it's, it's, we're, we're making progress on it. Anything else, so is there a motion to adjourn? Your second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.